Welcome to this evening's meeting of the Westerville City Schools Board of Education. We're delighted to have all of you this evening. The agenda will be displayed on the screen in the front of the room for you to follow along, and there will be two opportunities this evening to address the board. The first item being Agenda Item 6.1, the first set of public comments is relative to Agenda Items 7.1 through 11.1. Please state the agenda items you are referencing at the beginning of your comments. The second opportunity is Agenda Item 12.1. There is a sign-up sheet located on the table in the back of the room, and each speaker will have five minutes to address the board. And a timer will be shown on the screen. And with that, Ms. Marshall, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Bell?
Here.
Mrs. Altman?
Here.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Here.
Mrs. Meyer?
Here.
Mrs. Davidson?
Here.
Will you please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one mission underground, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Okay, up first this evening is District Highlights and Recognitions. First, we'd like to welcome Dr. Clark for joining us. This is his first evening, or first meeting, starting as superintendent of Westerville City Schools Board of Education. And I'm going to pass it over to Von Bell.
Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Meyer, members of the board, Dr. Clark, welcome, and Ms. Marshall. This evening, we have a very special presentation that will be made, and so I'd like to invite Dr. David Axner, who is the Executive Director of the Buckeye Association of School Administrators, to come forward at this time to make a special presentation.
Well, good evening, everyone. It is nice to be here, great room, great facility, and know a lot about your district, and it's a pretty darn good district, too, as I think you know. But exciting to be here tonight with, you know, Joe Clark's first meeting, and it's not too often that we get to award somebody a nice recognition on their first board meeting. So hopefully, it continues this way, and life is good, because you are in a great district. And I always start these by thanking the Board of Education for all you do. My wife always asks me, says, "Why would someone want to be on the board?" And I always tell her, "They just want to make things better and work hard for those kiddos," and as you do. But with that, again, it's been a difficult time sometimes with the politics, the national politics, and we're not always on the same side. But the bottom line is that it's pretty clear that you worked really hard, and I remember when you were screening candidates and some names were thrown out, and you had a couple of very strong candidates. But I got to tell you, I know for a fact you're going to be very happy with this guy that I know very well from Northeastern Ohio when I was up there, and coming down there, he's doing a very transition that's close to what I did when I came from small Sugar Grin Falls and came down to Dublin City. Everything's so big and different and scary, and the good news, I'll say about Joe, I know he takes care of the little things, and sometimes superintendents in large district jobs forget about why they're there and taking care of those. So again, excited for your start here, Joe, and you know we're there to support you. So again, my name is Dave Axner, been with BASA for just about 10 years now, the last two and a half as Executive Director. And so we are the professional organization for school superintendents. We have about 900 superintendents, but also in those numbers are district leaders, directors, assistant supers, and even some principals. We give them representation, which also adds to the representation for your district. With the Ohio Department of Education, maybe soon to be due, we'll find out about that in probably the next days. The General Assembly, the Governor's Office, too. Our connections, I think, help us a lot to sometimes nullify things that may be headed in the wrong direction, but at least give us the opportunity to have input. Professional sport, we've got 15 standing committees, and Joe is also very active in our Legislative Committee, which has got statewide representation and also brings in legislators to discuss bills and changes and recommendations that the superintendents would like to see. With that, we've got an ODE Committee, a Legislative Committee I mentioned, Finance, Higher Ed, a report card, and on and on. So every aspect of what a superintendent has to deal with, we try to cover and meet, many of those meet monthly. Each year, one member is selected from each of our 10 regions through the state, and we congratulate them with the Exemplary Leadership Award. This award is for service and leadership, and you are, I said those 10 regions, you're in Region 8. Joe actually is receiving this award from where he was up north in Region 3. So what I tell you, our goal is to just provide some external validation for what you already know, especially with going through the process as you did and did a fine job in regards to selecting Joe to be your leader. The criteria for this award in the region, and if you think about it, with 900 people competing for these, only one in each of the 10 regions are selected. They're selected by their peers, they have community involvement, they are very active professionally, they're a leader of character, an innovator, and sets an example to their peers. Tonight, I'm here, as I mentioned, Joe Clark was selected in Region 3, and he now takes that award to Region 8, so you've got another chance to grab another region here soon. I already mentioned a little bit about, you know, that Joe and the happiness for a lot of people when he was selected, and I think it goes back to, you know, what you got here. You got a really good superintendent, but you got an author, you got a motivational speaker, he's got a lot of other talents, and I'm sure it came out in the interview, that some of our superintendents don't have. And most of all, especially with the students, he's a motivator. And again, I think you're going to see that and only build on what a great district and community that you have here. I think probably the best way to just spotlight on what was said about Joe, as there was a lot that came into our Regional Director, Andy Hill, from Wadsworth, but here's what Andy wrote to summarize. "Joe has been past president of the Akron Area Superintendents Association. He has been a member of the Dream Team for Innovation, and I have had the opportunity to interact with him over a number of years with the IDEA group. In all settings, Joe is looked up to and respected by his peers. He is knowledgeable, and his colleagues trust his guidance when they turn to him for advice. While we are happy for Joe and his new job, his loss is a big one for Northeastern Ohio and our region. Our loss is Westerville's gain." So congratulations on that, and that's how the group up there feels about you and all you did there, and we're sorry to see you leave. Also, I would just say, when I talked about the little things and knowing you as well as I do, so we teach a class on the weekends for licenser in the superintendency, and I won't name, one of your employees is in that class, actually, so I'm not going to name him, but he's one of the top students. And interesting, he was telling a story about Joe just this past weekend, and it was about some issue with the parent, and the parent wanted you to join or come into an IP, and you said you would, and you would stop in. And I think in a lot of times, again, the bigger districts forget the small stuff. But just that rippled across the district, and a whole lot of staff members thought, "Just because of that, you're a pretty good guy." And again, taking care of that, caring about the kids, and see if you can make something bigger. So I just want to share that story, and I think it means a lot to where you are. So lastly, I would just say, I remember Joe when I came to Dublin, and I wanted to do some of the things and keep my student committees and some of those things going, and almost everybody said, "You just won't have time." Well, I made time, and it was the best decision, and I know you'll do the same. So if we can, congratulate Joe Clark with the Exemplary Leadership Award, and Joe, if you'd come up, I'd like to get a picture with you if you can. Thank you, David, and thank you to the Buckeye Association of School Administrators for your guidance and support throughout these years. I'm grateful to be a part of it, and now I'm going to work on that award in Region 8.
Thank you. Okay, moving on, 4.1, Superintendent's Report, so I'll pass it over to Joe again.
All right, so I do have a short report that I alluded to in the board update last week, and that is the three questions meeting process that I am rolling out with the help of the team over the next several months. We've already spent a lot of time, the team and I, what we call mapping the community. The procedure comes from a book by Dr. Jamie Volmer called Schools Cannot Do It Alone. It's, we adjusted it a little bit for our purposes, but basically, what we do is come up with as many different community groups as we can identify. And at this point, we're close to 100, and so we're talking about things like PTAs and booster clubs and ministerial associations and Kiwanis and Rotary and all of those sorts of groups. And after we've mapped the community, which should wrap up this week, next week, we'll be sending out a letter to these folks, the leaders of these organizations, asking them to please invite me to a meeting. And when I go to the meeting with some of my colleagues who will take notes, I'm going to ask three questions. What do you like about the Westerville schools? How can we improve? And what do you expect of your new superintendent? And the plan is to have about 100 of these community meetings between November 1st and February 29th. We'll gather all sorts of feedback from folks and use that as one portion of our strategic planning that will go into then starting in March. With the ultimate goal to be to have a completed strategic plan by late May or early June that the board can approve and help guide us as we go on. It is a really large undertaking, but I think it's really important to hear from folks about what we can do, what we can do better. And I would like, you know, folks to know that as we do the strategic planning, that is not going to be in isolation, even though we're going to have a ton of feedback from all of these communities, there will be another community group that helps with the strategic planning. That's to be determined yet, but that's where we are on this day six of my job here, and I'm looking forward to the work, and I'm looking forward to meeting everybody as I go around the community. Are there any questions for? All right. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Okay, 5.1, Approval of the Minutes of the Regular Board of Education Meeting Held on Monday, September 25, 2023. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments here? Hearing none.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
6.1, Public Comments, we do not have any this evening, which takes us to Financial, 7.1, Resolution to Approve the Purchases in accordance with ORC 5705.41 and Board Policy 6320. May I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Marshall, will you do talk to us about this?
Yes, thank you, President Davidson, members of the board. So these are what we call then-and-now purchase orders. This is where we have a purchase order that's dated after an invoice date, and anything over $3,000 that's in that situation requires board approval before we are able to pay it. So you have two in front of you this evening. One is for ELA novels at one of our high schools, and there was just some confusion about whether or not the PO had been opened, some miscommunication there. And then we have one for Project Voice for the Poetry Slam competition at, I don't even know if it's a competition, to be honest, but the Poetry Slam event, I will say, at Minerva Park Middle School, and that was just the timing of a grant coming in and some confusion around getting the budget set up for that. So that's all we have, but everything is in place now, and we are able to pay these with your approval.
Great. Any questions or comments? Hearing none.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Moving on to the Personnel Consent Agenda, is it okay if I take this as one? May I have a motion for 8.1 through 8.11? So moved.
Second.
And Mr. Cooper, welcome.
Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Meyer, members of the board, Dr. Clark, Ms. Marshall. This evening's Personnel Consent Agenda includes several items of action with regard to resignations, retirements, one-time pays, and other employment-related decisions. I would like to highlight our retirees on the agenda this evening. Lori Boyd is retiring after 27 years of service. Carol Kimnick is retiring after 31 years of service. And Catherine Reeser is just recently retired after 31 years of service. We are appreciative for all the work these three employees have done in their collective 89 years' worth of service to the district. So at this time, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Hearing none. Thank you so much.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Old business, I'm going to take this as one also, 9.1 through 9.2, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second. Any questions, comments, additions, changes? Okay, hearing none.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
New Business, 10.1, First Reading of Policy 2623.02, Third Grade Reading Guarantee, and I'd like to welcome Cheryl Relford.
Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Meyer, members of the board, Dr. Clark, and Mrs. Marshall. Under the House, the House proposed some revisions to the bill which warranted changes in third grade reading guarantee, which then resulted in us having to review our policies and guidelines as it's related to it. The most important piece or change that came from this new provision is that students in third grade can be promoted to fourth grade without retention. That was a main provision of the law. The only way they can be retained at this point is that the parents make the final decision, and that's a significant change in practice. We've always worked with our families at the building levels to determine if retention is appropriate or not, but under the guidelines, we would still reconvene those teams and make a decision based upon the needs of the students, but again, the parents would make the final decision. There are a few other areas that we are charged to provide some additional support as it relates to reading intervention services. A third grade student who did not make the scores for third grade reading guarantee would be eligible to continue reading intervention services as they progress to fourth grade and beyond until they are on grade level based upon test scores. We are also required now under the law to provide high dosage tutoring, which does align with our current practice for reading intervention, so that part won't be a big change for us. And the other main factor is they are required to have a ramp as well, until they're back on, until they're on the grade level. And those are the main provisions. At this time, there are no financial implications for the district because this current year, we had a total of 47 students who were not on track of the 47. One student was retained per parent request, and all 46, the other 46 were advanced to, promoted to fourth grade. We have reading intervention service teachers in place, and so they continue to receive those services as a fourth grader.
Any questions?
I do have a question, and actually, it's sort of a clarification regarding one of the terms in here that I'd appreciate if you could just talk about. So it says, "Intervention services shall be aligned with the science of reading as defined under state law." So could you please talk about that and where we have been with the science of reading and whether that actually is asking us to change anything?
So the good news for us, it's not asking us to change anything. You'll often hear a phrase, "cutting edge." I am very, we are very fortunate as a district that we started our work several years prior to these provisions. We already have research evidence-based programming in place that align with building those foundational literacy skills. We have, that's Tier 1, which is Gen Ed, which all children receive. In our reading intervention services, we are using Spire, which is also aligned with that to support the practice. And then if we need additional support, we do work within our building teams to make adjustments in the plans of support for students based upon what some of those targeted needs are. So the good news is, we're doing a lot of great things, we're growing a lot of kids, there's still room for improvement because our kids, as they come in, they start at different places, and we've got to tailor the instruction to meet their full range of needs, and that does vary sometimes, kid by kid.
Yeah, thank you. And then just to dig one step into that, because it may not be familiar to everybody, the science of reading, right, it says as defined under state law. Can you just talk about how that's a change that we've seen in the field, right?
So I'm going to give you one example that might help families understand. Some years ago, we used Guided Reading, which is the three-queuing system. We no longer, under the law, can use that system. We are focusing on those early foundational skills so that we are building the foundation for what reading, what a child needs to read in order to be able to move on. The queuing system doesn't really, didn't lend itself for that level of support, so there's been a big shift from what reading instruction looked like up until, for us, I would say up until about three years ago, when we started making some shifts. But there are some districts where they're just starting making that shift, so that we won't have that, those growing pains that some of the other districts are experiencing right now because we've been working on it for quite a long time. And so all of our PD aligns with the science of reading. It is all about, you know, building phonics skills and a systematic approach, phonological awareness, vocabulary, fluency, comprehension. We've been doing, building those pieces and parts for a while.
Thank you for that, and for, I know it's been a tremendous effort over the years to get all of that into PD and make that shift, but I so appreciate that we are already there. Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Super appreciative. Any other questions?
I can just have a quick clarification, or maybe just to pinpoint it, but each year, as students progress, if they're not on level, the team will reassess where that student is and build a new plan based on where they are.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
And if I could just add one piece of that, if in the event that the student is on a reading plan and they show that they're making progress even mid-year, we adjust the plan because the plan should be based upon what the needs of the student are, and so as a student grows, we should adjust with them.
Thank you so much. Appreciate it. 10.2, First Reading Policy 8210 School Calendar, and I'd like to welcome Mr. Reeves.
Good evening, President Davidson, Vice President Meyer, Dr. Clark, Mrs. Marshall, and members of the board. I have for your consideration a first reading of a recommended change in Board Policy 8210 School Calendar. The background for this change centers around a change prompted by legislative action taken within the budget bill this summer that eliminated the use of Blizzard bags that we have been using for several years now as a way to make up hours in a school year when schools are closed for the allowable calamity days, and hours need to be made up because some of the schools or the district as a whole may have exceeded the amount of time that they can be out. Blizzard bags are replaced with online day plans. The requirements of the online day plans are listed in the recommended policy change, but some of the highlights of those changes are providing for teacher-directed synchronous learning, which is real-time online learning. We must take attendance and track the participation of our students, making sure that we have access for populations such as our English learners and our students with disabilities, a communication plan to staff students and parents regarding our online day plan to ensure that teachers and students know how to contact their teacher if there are any issues arise within that plan, and how we plan on meeting the technical needs of students that may need them. And so the board must adopt this resolution of this plan, which we will, I will bring before the board to consider on October 23rd, because we must submit the plan to ODE, our resolution, by November 1st and on August 1st in subsequent years. So one thing I will note is this is what we submit if this is the plan we choose to go to, but by submitting this plan does not obligate us to use that if we decide, for example, the best course of action is to physically bring students into our place if we have to make up days.
I just have a quick question. I know in here it says, there's description of how to get technology to those that might need it. So what happens if a student at the day of does not have technology?
Well, typically, this, I'll give you an example. Say we have a Blizzard coming, and we're going to be out all five days of a week, and we know that day four and five, Thursday and Friday, for some areas, some of our schools will put us beyond the allowable days. We don't have to necessarily, we can, we don't have to enact those days while we are out. We can sit as a group, work with our teachers and our admin team to say, "Okay, when are we going to make up this day?" And districts have done that in the past to say, "Are we going to make up this day on one of the spring break days? Are we going to go one more day closer to Memorial Day to make up the hours and make up this day?" And I would tell you, probably when you look at the schedule of our schools, the most vulnerable areas of our district that have the least margin of error for hours are probably our PM preschool and our PM kindergarten, half-day, and our half-day kindergarten and AM preschool. Our high schools have a lot of buffer, our middle schools have a little bit less, but still a good buffer. It would take a pretty significant winter for them to get to that point, but that's probably the area that would come first that we would need to make up. And then we would have to determine, well, is this the best format for them to make that up, or do we bring our young people in? So we don't have to do it while we're out.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anybody else?
Scott, I appreciate the deeper explanation of that. My fear has been, as people hear about this, they will think that every time there's a snow day, that this is what's going to happen. And by the way, Dr. Clark, I've had people say, "Oh, no, he's from northern Ohio."
The dirty secret is I love a snow day as much as anybody else, but there has to actually be snow, and I also tell the kids, "I have to get good reports from their teachers. If they're not behaving and not getting good grades, I might not call a snow day."
I do appreciate that because it could be confusing to people, so thanks for your efforts to make this clear.
Yeah, thank you.
Anybody else? Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Moving on to Recommended Actions, Standing Business, 11.1, Early Graduate, may I have a motion to approve early graduate candidate from Westerville South High School who has completed all local and state requirements?
So moved.
Second.
Welcome, Ann Baldwin.
Good evening, President Davidson, members of the board, Dr. Clark, and Mrs. Marshall. I am recommending your approval of a candidate for early graduation from Westerville South. This student is a member of the class of 2024 who has completed their graduation requirements and is currently eligible for a high school diploma at this time. The student does plan to participate in the May 2024 graduation ceremony with their cohort, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
No, hearing none. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Dr. Nestor Baker?
Yes.
Mrs. Altman?
Yes.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes.
Public Comments, 12.1, we do- Public comments, 12.1, we do have one person signed up to speak, Annabella Williams. Welcome.
When my children were little, I wanted to be a bus driver, and my dear husband asked me to wait until they were grown. So at 52, I pursued my C D L, and with much hard work and encouragement from my husband, I got my C D L. I love being a bus driver. I love driving my students, and I love being on the bus. I've been driving for 15 years, and I'd like to be able to continue for a few more years in order to retire. I am here today to ask the board to please consider and care about a situation that happened to me. I was told, when I was detached from Westerville City Schools, that I needed to get my resignation to Carly Collins by 12 o'clock on Friday, September 1st. The travesty that happened to me was that I sent an email to Carly Collins stating that I resigned from Westerville City Schools as a bus driver at 11 o'clock on Friday, September 1st. I presumed that everything was in place and that my resignation would be the exit status. I later found out that it is not the exit status. She, I called her and she told me she never got my resignation. And I have my former resume where I worked for Nationwide Children's Hospital for eight years, four years for the Director of Child Abuse Prevention, Ms. Deborah Sindak, and I was her secretary. For four years, I worked for a team of orthopedic surgeons, one of them being the Director of Orthopedic Surgery, Dr. John Keen, and his resident staff, along with two other orthopedic surgeons and their resident staff. I know how to send an email. I am absolutely positive I sent that email to her. I do not profess to know how the internet works. I believe it's somewhere in cyberspace. All I know is that I sent it. And I even have another one dated today, not dated today, but properly dated, because I'm asking the board to please revisit my situation with a view to accepting my resignation because at this point in time, I feel like my C D L is practically worthless because of my exit status with Westerville City Schools. I elected to resign. I have no control over why that email did not get to her. I only know that I sent it. And if your I T people can find it somewhere out in cyberspace, I'm asking that you please have them look for it. I even brought my laptop. If they, if you want your site, your P, your I T people to look for it on my laptop, I'd be happy to turn that over. I know I sent it. And at this point in time, I just ask that you please reconsider and accept my resignation, maybe after you've had a chance to have your I T people look into my, my situation and correct this travesty. I am, am. Unfortunately, I am really needing to continue to work in order to retire. But I don't think that I have a chance at getting another job as a school bus driver with the status that Westerville City Schools has on my record. So I ask that you please reconsider my resignation and accept it.
Thank you so much for coming this evening and speaking to us. I'm not sure if I stated at the beginning of the comments, we don't answer from up here, but we will look into it. And again, I appreciate you coming and speaking to us. Thank you.
Thank you for taking the time to hear me out. I appreciate that.
Okay. I'm sorry?
Do you want anything from me?
You, Mr. Dorn in the back, you can give it to him. That would be great. Again, thank you so much. Appreciate it. Okay, moving on to board comments. Would anyone like to go first or would anyone like to make a comment?
Well, I just want to welcome Dr. Clark again. I mean, I feel like we keep doing that, but there's just so much enthusiasm about you being here, and I just appreciate the way that you spent so much time in the schools before your official start. So thank you and looking forward to working with you.
Thanks. I'll echo Jen's comments. I'm excited that you're here too, and I know you've already been sending out notes to the students, and I've seen them get really excited about those notes, so I think that's a really nice touch. And also, just congratulations to our retirees and our graduates. Just thank you. I do have a legislative update, although we could be here all night, so I just chose one. House Bill 187 was introduced by Representatives Thomas Hall, a Republican from Madison Township, and Adam Byrd, a Republican from New Richmond. This was voted out of the House Ways and Means Committee last week and could be considered on the House floor next week. This bill, if passed, temporarily, temporarily requires the use of a three-year average for reevaluating property values, including current agricultural use value for farmland, which results in real property valuations being based equally on the past three years, rather a three-year lookback on sales with an emphasis placed on the most recent year's sales occurring closest to the tax lien date. Further, it would give county auditors, rather than the Tax Commissioner, the final authority regarding the property tax equalization of a county's real property, with the Tax Commissioner able to appeal to the Tax Appeals Board. There is a compare, a companion bill in the Senate, Senate Bill 153, but I know Ms. Marshall has reached out to our legislators about this particular thing, and so I didn't know if you wanted to explain a little bit more about what it means for our district.
Thank you, Mrs. Meyer. So I have reached out to our, some of our legislators, and I've yet to hear back from them. I'm still working on that, though. They will, I'm sure they'll eventually get back to me. So House Bill 187, like you mentioned, does the three-year average. So currently, when the value updates are done, it's done based on the most recent year. So that could potentially decrease the percentage of increase in values that we see. Right now, I know Franklin County had put out that for Westerville City Schools residential values, we were looking at approximately a 38% increase in property values. So, but for Westerville Schools, that doesn't necessarily equal a 38% increase in property taxes. So we have several voted levies that are collecting well over the 20 mil floor. So when we talk about the 20 mil floor, which has been, kind of been talked about, they're looking at adjusting that. Ohio revise code says that no school district will receive less than 20 mils. So we're, our total voted rate is over 70 mils, and we're collecting about 36 to 45 mils. So we're well above that 20 mil floor. So the growth that we will see is just on our unvoted mileage, which is 3.8 mils. It's a very small portion of our overall property taxes. I don't expect it to be a huge increase. It's equal to about $50 per $100,000 of home value for our residents. So I don't expect that to be a huge increase. School districts outside of central Ohio, lots of rural school districts, there are several districts in the state that are at the 20 mil floor, and that would be a direct increase for those property taxpayers in those districts. So that's why the legislature is looking at doing something because it will impact them at a higher amount, percentage-wise. So lots going on. I think they need to do something, but there is a joint property tax review committee that has been established that is working on looking at property taxes and property values as a whole. And our hope would be that the legislature would wait until that committee has an opportunity because it's, you know, made up of a bunch of experts in this matter, wait until they have the opportunity to go through and make sure that we don't have any unintended consequences with any legislation that goes through. So we'll keep trying to get ahold of our esteemed legislators.
Thank you.
Sorry. Joe, I'm just thrilled that you're here and I look forward to working together. Like I've said before, you have an amazing team, and I can't wait for this team to work with your team. So, okay. The board will meet in regular session on Monday, October 23rd at 6:00 p.m. here at the Early Learning Center. And 15.1, executive session for purposes of discussing employment and compensation of a public employee, may I have a motion, please?
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mr. Bell?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Dr. Nestbaker?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. So we are going to move into executive session, and then we'll come back here and adjourn, but there will be no more business, just so everyone knows. And thank you all for coming. We are back from executive session, and I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Mrs. Meyer?
Yes.
Mrs. Ottman?
Yes.
Mrs. Davidson?
Yes. And with that, we're adjourned.